Bring me to order, place of flaggers. My pleasure.
The Eagles to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Percy?
Here.
Shipman?
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Ister?
I need approval of minutes. Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, Police Mention Board, Redevelopment Authority. Your motion accept. Second?
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman? Can you hear us okay?
Not much on the agenda, but is there any audience comment on any of the agenda items? Okay. Move construction loan from Riverfront Project to Construction Project, Jim?
Actually, we're going there as hoping that line of credit we have with the Lori National Bank, to not just include the Riverfront Project, using them probably for the Chester Street Project. So, I want to make a motion that we open that to include more than just the Riverfront Project. We're going to, Treasurer Kevin Tru, talk to Tom Cressinger?
Yes.
That's what he recommended, Jim.
He says, let's open it, do anything you want to, as for any kind of destruction, but it was up to council or something to move these other places.
So, all we're going to do is alter the agreement we already have, like you're saying, just add it.
Just open it up, expand. To use it for more projects than just that project.
Alright, that's a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yeah.
Rechner?
Yes.
2014 CDBG application preparation schedule, Jim?
Yes, the schedule for 2014. The, uh, we'll have a meeting on February the third. Now, Jamie isn't here this evening, but I'm just going to read off briefly. These dates will be repeated more and more because of the dates change. February 24th, the 3rd of March, uh, the March of 10th, April 7th, and so forth. And this is just to, uh, uh, this is the block rate money for 2014. Without standard procedure, but I have to make a motion to, to, to accept this time line of getting the payments.
Ister?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yeah.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Keystone Community Grant Agreement with the Housing Authority of Northumberland County, Jim?
Yes, here's some time ago, we went, signed agreement, I think it was in 13. And we allocated $30,000 for the blighted properties. We did, uh, the county received, I'm not sure the total amount, I think we're getting $44,000?
Yes.
And, uh, I can make a motion to take and, uh, have an agreement with the county to, uh, get the $44,000.
And this is like, what we approved at the last meeting, was about the blighted thing. Now, this is just about a fair housing resolution. It's just, we, no, no. No, okay.
This, this one's to participate with the county in that project.
Okay. Right, we have a first and second?
We got a first.
Second.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yeah.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Alright, now fair housing, Jim.
Fair housing, fair housing basically says that we go up these blighted properties, we don't take and throw anybody out of their homes. These properties or homes are, have been abandoned and vacant for, well, I'm not sure, a period of time, but, uh, that's a fair housing resolution. Make a motion to accept that, or enter that.
Need a second?
Shipman? Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Percy?
Yes.
Anybody here from SRI?
Okay. Keystone Community's application is complete.
Please, sir, why don't you come up here to our new podium?
Oh, okay.
Off the side, so.
Sure, sure. Not a problem.
That way we can see you. Thank you, sir.
Don't even look at Jim. See him better yet. The Keystone Community's application is complete, awaiting approval from the DCED. The 2014 membership campaign is getting underway here shortly. The Riverfront Committee is working to schedule activities and events for upcoming season. And the River Festival has started planning this year's River Festival. Which is going to be awesome. Under the Spark Committee, the Albright Council has been formed. And they had, I believe, two meetings now, and we're moving forward with that project. We're seeking additional partners for the SPP program, which is related to the Albright Center. Uh, we're now accepting applications for the vintage banners. And, uh, we're looking for volunteers for that task also. Uh, under Business and Economic Development, we're creating a comprehensive listing of vacant properties and how they are zoned throughout the city of Sunbury. Analyzing data for surveys conducted on how to best attract new business to the area. And under the Elm Street Hill neighborhood, we're currently without a manager situation to be resolved soon. And we're, uh, moving forward with the rain viral program. And, uh, the SRI has a board retreat scheduled for February 17th, from 12 to 5. That's it. And on one other note, I'd just like to mention that there's eight area businesses doing a Marty crawl on March 1st. Has nothing to do with SRI, just on another note. Just wanted to make you aware. Thank you.
What was that, Saye?
March 1st.
The Saturday, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes.
Question, SRI?
Yeah, I, I, anyway, this additional funding partners, is that, is that like the existing ones with the Lori Bank and PPL?
Yes, we're looking for partners for that program, for the council. And it's any business, any amount of money, we're not, we're not limited now, we're in terms of the SPP, which means if you have $100 and you'd like to donate for that project, you can.
This isn't the tax situation?
You can get, you can like, uh, you can use it, your business can use it on their tax credits for Pennsylvania taxes. Okay? Personal individuals, they can use it on their regular taxes as a tax deduction, because we are a five old C3.
You're just looking for any kind of sponsors.
Any kind of sponsors, yeah, for the Albright Center, yes.
Thank you, Saye.
You're welcome.
Um, there's nothing to Redevelopment Authority, they're going to meet next week. The weather, the way it was, they haven't had meetings since their last meeting. If we're getting new businesses or any, anybody, anything from the audience, any comments, new general comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Regina Russell, I'm going back to, um, Councilman Ister, um, uh, with the funds, bear with me, please. Was the money for construction designated, was that money designated just for the Riverfront? The construction money?
You mean the loan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And, and when you take a loan like that, um, is that from the state or, or federal government?
No, it's with the Lori Bank.
So, the city is taking a loan?
A line of credit, yes.
Another line of credit, in addition to the $300,000 that was going to be for the wall, or is this the same thing?
No, this is...
Different?
This is a line of credit that's set up years ago when we started a Riverfront Project.
It's the same thing?
No, no, no.
Same line of credit?
Same line of credit, yeah, but she had mentioned $300,000, that's another issue.
No, I, I, you want to know about the same line of credit? Okay.
I'm trying to stay with that. And what, um, what would constitute any, uh, construction? Can you give me an idea of what is...
Chester Street Project.
That is considered construction? The new, any construction?
Okay, yes?
Thank you. Um, can I ask one more question, please?
Yep.
I'm going back to, um, the code office now. I have, um, the gentleman that you guys referred to as Charlie, he's parking his waste truck, which is uncovered, it transports, um, trash, chemicals, furniture. He's parking again in his spare, it's been there since Sunday, the truck's been there since Sunday. And, um, is he given permission then to do that?
I don't think he needs permission to do that, he owns private property. And we were down, looked at it today, three of us, and I think four of us were including Chief. There's nothing wrong with what they do. He had nothing in the truck but some scrap metal, no garbage, and a truck for parking private property.
So, Mr. Rechner, you're the councilman that is designated over the code office, ma'am?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Now, um, I've been hitting the head with the same thing that you're saying to me for the last year and a half. Sometimes the code office seems to get control over it, then changes are made on council, and we're back to the same problem. I have had to research hours to find the correct codes that would deal with this issue. By council permitting this to continually happen, being selective and finding reasons other than what the one book, Co-ordinates for All City Residents, should apply to, it seems like it's not being enforced. So, I'm saying that as to say, that is a commercial truck. It's uncovered, it, um, he transports, I would say, what you could consider when it rains, when it snows. You're going to have a runoff of dirt on private property, which just so happens to be in the city of Sunbury's limits. Why make these ordinances if you're not going to enforce them? Now, by you having a precedence of this gentleman being able to park anything that he wants because that's considered private property, it's, it's, it's a setting of precedence for people in my neighborhood to park other vehicles any way that they want to, because it's not going to be enforced. Either through the Friends and Family Plan, or it's just being ignored.
Well, it's not really ignored, we answer everything from the end of the call, and believe me, we got a pact about that, Jim.
And, and I have to be persistent, because I'm passionate and I'm right.
I would say 90% of them are unfounded, okay? I mean, we've checked them out, uh, and Chief, you were down here today, what was wrong with where that truck was parked?
Where the parking portion goes, that's not private property. That's not violation of that system.
I'm not fighting anybody anymore about it being private property. I am fighting about what type of vehicles are being parked on private property in city limits.
Where she parked?
Your own ordinance.
On the street?
Please, look at your own ordinance. I can't remember the one right now, 163281, I, I can't remember. But you're, you're not using that.
Are you saying he should park it on the street?
Why not? And he can park it on private property, but let me address another issue too, which is, this is a tenant, the tenant is renting a garage. Why isn't he parking that vehicle in the garage?
Well, no, I was never in that garage.
And, the ordinance also deals with the issue of commercial vehicles being parked on private property in front of a garage door. So, now the other tenant upstairs parks his vehicle on quote-unquote "private property" in front of a garage door. I don't know why and what caused the fire that was there before the property was renovated, but it certainly can happen again.
Do you ever park your car in front of your garage door?
And...
I'm just asking, yes or no?
Of course I do, but I have a driveway, sir. I have a driveway, that's why I can park my vehicle in front of my garage door.
Mrs. Russell, we found nothing wrong with it.
You're not using your code book, that's why you're not finding anything wrong with it. Well, I wouldn't expect you, but I'll keep bringing this issue up, because you're in violation of your own codes.
When you were down here today, were you in a car, were you on air speaking?
No.
Then it doesn't fall under the municipal waste act? There's no regulation on that.
Well, the truck certainly says it's a municipal waste truck.
So, all those trucks are parked up there, that's residential.
It doesn't fall under those guidelines.
You know, I just ask you guys to have them come and park it in your neighborhood, and make your neighborhood look good. It's an eyesore. Not only is it an eyesore, it is a truck and a vehicle that has, that he, he transports trash with. Now, I am not being unreasonable, and I'm, I, I have to be using some kind of logic here. And like I said, for a year and a half, you smacked me in the head with it. Now, I got a neighbor down here with the same code that you guys have been quoting to me for a year and a half. As long as they leave five feet of public sidewalk for pedestrians to walk on, they can do that. Well, I got another neighbor now, she's parking two cars and blocking two entrances to her house. And she has children in the house, which I'm sure if there was a fire, that would be considered an exit, but you guys are finding reasons not to tell her to move her vehicle.
Chief, you were also at that place, was there anything wrong with the way that woman had that car parked? The one that has the handicaps?
It's not handicap, I don't see anything that are handicapped.
The what, that's the one on the other side of the 4th Street?
Yes. 354 Walnut Street.
She's blocking part of the sidewalk, but she's allowed a, um, passageway of her driveway through. I talked to her, she's got handicapped people, I think she said three?
Three.
In wheelchair, handicapped people in that house. So, as long as there's passage around the sidewalk, even though it's her property, it's not technically in a violation of 2075.
So, when the kids walk by them, they're banging on the car because they don't walk around the car to walk on so-called quote-unquote "public sidewalk." That's no problem, because she has handicapped children. And if she has handicapped children, she should have an exit and an entrance for those handicapped children to be rolled out on a bus or whatever. But her vehicles are parked side by side, and there's no way without pulling those vehicles out of that entranceway that she has, that to get someone in the vehicle with a wheelchair, and I've never seen a guy in there using those vehicles with wheelchairs.
She's got a handicapped van, there's also a ramp in the, the dual driver, she owns both sides of that.
Yes.
Compartment.
Yes.
I'm just trying to be compassionate, though, because she has three handicapped people.
And I believe she's also said that the door that Mrs. Russell's talking about is not used.
And, and this wasn't happening until the house was renovated, and then both homes were connected, so that she could, I guess, park the vehicle. She wasn't using that before. Now, since the house has been renovated, she's committed to park two vehicles there and block the sidewalk, and here we go, we got, she's got three handicapped children. What about all the other people that are handicapped in the city? What excuse are we using for that? I'll send you a list.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I have to agree with Ms. Russell, the city is certainly not tending care of their code enforcement. What I'm going to bring up is a long and old issue, I know Mr. Ister doesn't even want to hear about this again. But I'm basically addressing Mr. Henry, Mr. Rechner, and Mr. Shipman. I know your position, Mayor Percy, and your position on this, Mr. Ister. And that again, is the Celtech site. Now, you guys have been informed many, many times by myself and others about that site and the lack of code enforcement there. There's everything going on there from not enforcing your code, and Rick, I'd be glad to work with you and show you all the codes, they're far too numerous to list while I'm talking here.
As far as I know, there's nothing, nothing happening there at this time. I haven't seen any traffic in and out of that place, or anything other than just that dirt lying there.
Okay, well then, could we, could we talk about Article 1, 143, 123, Article 3, 143, 7, Article 4? And that basically deals with the stormwater management plan that is not in place right now, that needs to be according to your codes. I'd also like to talk about the Article 5, 143, 14, Article 6, 143, 15, 143, dash, 16, 143, 17, and 143, 18, city of Sunbury is failed to enforce the aforementioned code. And that is the stormwater management ownership and maintenance plan that must be in place according to your code, not what's going on on the site. I could go on and on with these code violations. But these are two that you've, well, you and Dale haven't been on council, but have been let go by council. I have a long, long list, and I've submitted numerous letters, and nothing has happened. Two meetings ago, I brought the Celtech site up, Mr. Ister said it's old business. We've heard it, but nothing's been done about it. Now, there's a long list of violations. Here I have a letter from Moran. Actually, from DDP. I'll read you just a small excerpt of it, it's a rather long letter. This is a study that was, that had been done on the site, uh, property owner, this was when JDM Acquisitions owned it. Basically, what it says is that there's so much arsenic on that site, they do not want human contact. Now, last summer, there were so many trucks on that site that it looked like the city was on fire some nights. There was that much particulate in the air. All the residents, anywhere where that particulate was raised, breathed that. And it went on and on. I called it to council's attention, but nothing has happened. Now, I can go on and on, I have, here are the documents I can read you, and I'm not going to do it tonight, on, on the code violations, just on that site. And I've compiled this over a year and a half. I have enough here. It's very serious. Now, summer's coming, you need to stop that kind of activity there. It's not occurring now, as you said, Rick, not, nothing going on right now. But there are so many other violations on that site, that something needs to be done, must be done.
You're saying these are violations that Mr. Moran did?
Mr. Moran, by not filing a stormwater management plan for that site, is in violation. And the city has failed now for more than a year and a half, since I initially notified them of those violations, to do anything about it.
What, and, and I said back there, was something with, with the city deferred to the county or municipal authority on the stormwater?
Yeah, the last thing, this issue with, uh, through its head. I believe, uh, there's a letter on record from, uh, the gentleman that's employed by the Northumberland County Conservation District. And, uh, I believe he's the one that is visiting the site, I just heard that there were violations of it. The, uh, I'll call it a closure plan, that may not be determined, that was used by DDP. But there was a plan in effect that, that the owners of Celtechs had to, had to go by. And, uh, the test of whether that was complied with, the regulations DDP would comply with, was the inspection by Northumberland County Conservation District as an agent for DDP on that. What is his name, Greg?
Uh, his name, it loses me right now, but I too have talked to him.
Yeah, you, you've talked with him, I know that. That being the case, the section 143, is 143 a stormwater management?
Yes.
There's, early in 143, chapter 143, there's an exemption qualification. And what, some of the things that exempt, for example, are lots, uh, 5,000 square feet.
That's correct.
Probably years ago, it should have been construction, the 5,000, which closely all the other ones are. County finally adopts a plan, and we get orders and such that. One of the exemptions is that, uh, I won't have the wording right, because I don't have the ordinance here. But one of the exemptions is when there are plans that are controlled by state agencies like DDP, that is exempt from the city's, uh, stormwater management plan and controlled exclusively by DDP interagents. And that's what we discussed, uh, last year, that that appears to qualify as an exemption for a stormwater management plan. That's why there is no requirement for the stormwater management plan for the closure of that site. You already have a plan filed with DDP, and the, uh, the Northumberland County Conservation District representative, his name's lost my mind at present, uh, Mick something?
I wish I could remember it, John, but I think we're on the same page as far as the man and the name.
He's the one that has inspected it, and there's a letter on record that, and he visits it, it's not once and done, he visits the site every so often with one complaints. And I know that there have been complaints by others to his, his agency. And, uh, and he has inspected it, there is, there is a letter on record that the owner of Celtechs was in compliance with that closure agreement that the owner had with DDP. So, unless there's new violations, which, which I'm not aware, then, uh, I don't know that, uh, it's a legal question whether the city has jurisdiction there. When DDP really states that most stormwater management plans is required, because it's a state-run, uh, situation, permit like the, a permit or a closure agreement like DDP. Uh, I don't know that anything's changed since then.
Well, I think there are a number of things changed. One of the things we talked about, the gentleman that you were referencing, that we can't remember.
McCleary.
McCleary, yes, Mike McCleary. One of the things you're referencing is the earth disturbance. Now, the site is a 22 acre, roughly 22 acre site, but Mike McCleary's inspection was done for DDP on a one acre site. That does not exempt the other 21 acre. So, the problem still remains. And if you look at McCleary's report, and I've submitted that to the city as well, you've had it for a long time, they will well be aware, and particularly if they have Mr. Affabom look at it, that that reference, what you're making, is concerning one acre, because that's the earth disturbance report that Mike McCleary submitted. So, we have 21 additional acres to deal with. Additionally, there was some argument or discussion here in chambers about the agreement with Northumberland County taking over those sorts of things. You have also received a letter that that is not the case. It's one Northumberland County letterhead, it was sent to us, and I forwarded it to the city. So, there is a problem with stormwater management there. I have many, many other things, and Rick, I would just as soon work with you, show you all these things, you haven't been on council.
You get me, try to do that, and we'll go.
Well, just arrange a meeting sometime. Just arrange a meeting.
May I suggest that there is such a meeting, that you invite Mr. McCleary to that meeting, and, uh, and perhaps hopefully you clarify.
And there are many other violations beyond the stormwater management, I've, I've mentioned that as one. I'm not going to make everybody sit here until we go through all these documents. There are any number of problems that need to be solved, and they're serious problems. People in Sunbury are breathing this stuff in, and it's not good. And it's run along now, year and a half, headed for two years, with a lot of problems. And it needs to be resolved. Summer's going to come, and have the same situation there again. There are people in this room who live up in that part of town. They'll be glad to tell you that what I'm saying has happened. And it's not good. It's something, it's cloud over the city that is not good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, um, say that I think language is starting to look very nice, and I'd like to applaud or commend the council, you and the council, for the work that you're doing in Sunbury, the place.
The SRI group.
The business area.
Yeah, the SRI group's in front of that right now, and some of the different things that were coming up, and some digging, some money, yeah, that's, thank you for noticing that, because there is a lot of good things on it. We hope to announce in the, in the very near future. Mr. Mayor, are you going to hand it up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Russell. I want to ask about demolition contracts. Uh, I got a write-in order request to reply back this week. Now, there's one that put, that dropped my, my specialty from Steinbach and Williamsport, eighty-eight thousand five hundred odd dollars in value. Now, according to what I got back, there were no bids taken in for that contract before it was awarded. Now, how can you hand out a contract for that value by getting bids from the companies first?
That's not exactly true. They had a pre-bid, other contractors showed up, nobody else bid the job.
Well, I asked for copies of bids, I got no copies of bids, just the actual contract itself.
Nobody else bid the job.
Okay.
It was, I cannot give you a document that doesn't exist. There was numerous bidders there, looked the job over, they felt it was too difficult, they walked away. Nobody else bid the job.
A lot of, a lot of the guys in the area can't, that was too much for them, it was too big.
I'm just surprised that Steinbach had got this contract when we're already facing legal action over the Nestle Mid and Rist Street with that house around there. That's a bit I can't understand, the, the House of Rist Street that was damaged by then, during demolition.
That's not true, and that is not true of the city of Sunbury.
Well, I mean, I, I just find it strange that, uh, that that's hanging over their heads, and they only get this other contract from the city.
It ain't just hanging over their heads. If you're in a company's meeting, you ought to bring some facts with you.
to bring some facts with you.
Well, that's, that's a fact, the, the only company that were involved, I mean...
That's your opinion, there's no fact to it.
Okay, that's my opinion.
Anything else?
Well, that's all I have to ask you, Wes.
They were the only people to bid on.
Okay.
If you go back in the minutes, you'll see that in one of the minutes that we did, that's a couple of months ago. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Were you able to talk to any additional information about Spang here, or did he not have some documents here?
Yeah, they got, in fact, there's some things printed up here, there's some different, I know there's something in Weasworth, there's an outfit, I don't remember the name, like there was somebody flying by me, there's an outfit in Weasworth, Bloomsburg, Carrie said it's one here out, is it Bay Alley Cat? Fair, that there is, there is, I don't know how they're doing, a set of doctors or something in Bloomsburg, and people can take their cats up there, catch cats and take them up there, I don't know exactly how it works, but we did find, we were able to find some, some, at least some outlets, that people wanted to do that.
Because also, I found one that has the PA cats, that they do have clinics in Bloomsburg, Danville, and Sealest Road.
I don't see that one up here, maybe you can leave us a copy of that, well, we just plan on making copies, leaving them up here the next couple of meetings, if anybody's interested, contacting anybody, or take one of each.
There's also another one, it's called the Eastern PA Animal Alliance, and they say here, if you would like to host a Spang Day with our mobile van, be in contact.
The one I was talking to was a $40 fee, and a $12 fee for something else, is less than $2.
There's the one that's...
It's about the Danville.
There's three of them there.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? New business, before I get into the thing, Dale, you want to talk about a tax, a text alert?
Yeah, I'm sure we're, we have patches, no, this is the most accumulated we had one time since 1996, and this time I'd like to publicly thank Jimmy with the Park Direct, Jimmy with the code office, Sunbury Municipal Authority for assistance, so no removal that we've been going out on. Part of the problem we're having is to get the cars moved, we're trying social media, the radio station, the, the newspaper, and Facebook.
The TV station.
And the TV station, correct. But you know how the school district has that text alert now, telling delays, and the county uses it? We're not going to be good at anything tonight, but I'd like to at least let council know that I'm going to check into it with the help of the other council, see what it's going to cost, maybe we can get them off, because the municipal authority told me today that they have almost everybody's phone number in the city, that they could send out an alert to people that have cell phones. So down in the room, we could also use it for special events, and stuff like that, yes, there's a fee associated with it, I don't know what, this isn't early, early yet, but I just like for everybody to know that I'll be looking into it, and then I'll be reporting back as it's going.
We've been on the snow removal, instead of police cars driving up and down screaming out on the loudspeaker, it'd be nice to be able to call people and say, you know, tonight we cleaned the streets, certain streets, moved your car, that and everything.
Yeah, Dale, you have...
I don't know what it costs.
Well, Dale, you didn't want to see the, like, the mechanisms where the child was sitting in the neighborhood.
You get text alerts for Amber Alert and everything, correct.